Meeting called order.
Dr. Robinson, here, Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Dr. Slut, here, Ms. Ware, here, Mr. Dan.
Here. Okay, that two point one eight, we have our fiction. This can, we have our number.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept by affirmation all of existing officers, but I want to nominate and want a year to be secretary. Does that make sense?
Okay, I tell you what, how we're doing it, you gotta go one by one, right?
No, you don't have to.
You'll do like it.
I want to nominate Mr. James as the president, Mr. West as vice president, Dr. Robinson as the assistant secretary, and while we are as the secretary.
Okay, then, all right. Attention.
No, no one, I move that the nomination.
Say it.
Seven all in favor.
Aha.
All right, pass is five. Okay. Now, anything on the agenda need to be changed at this time?
As the chair, I move that we move eight point three, the privilege of organizational charge to a close of termination, because it will be a discussion of personnel.
There's also eight point one, also.
And eight point four, eight point.
Eight point four. Eight point seven.
And eight point eight five.
Sure, I'm going with all these.
Well, let's make it clear that we're moving it because it is, all of them will be discussing personnel issues that need to be in close termination.
What about eight point nine to do it, eight point ten, and eight point eleven? So, okay?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer motion that we approve the agenda with those necessary amendments and changes as per article. Which would be eight point one, eight point three, eight point four, eight point seven, eight point eight. You move to executive session. Too close to termination.
Okay.
Second.
They're moving seven all in favor. All right, pass is five. Okay. What are the comments? My evidence. Presentation, recognition and presentation, Mr. Feer.
Good morning, Mr. James, members of the board. We do have a great teacher that we would like to recognize today, Ms. Margaret Ann Moore. She's known for a long time, we call her G. As a kindergarten teacher, in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, Ms. Moore had the highest district MCAS average of seven sixty-seven. That's higher than the cut score of six eighty-one. Ms. Moore was then looped from kindergarten, first grade, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. In the spring of twenty-three, ninety percent of her first graders were at or above grade level. So, we want to.
Congratulations, we thank you for your excellence that you've demonstrated over the course of the years. We appreciate you.
Open it up, G, so we.
Do you have anything you want to say?
Just thank you, and I enjoy what I do, and I appreciate the opportunity that you all have given me.
We got another baby.
He's auctioned. You can go on and let him know that you're not related to him anymore.
Okay. All right, approval minutes. Approve of June twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Approve of June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, public hearing meeting. Approve of June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, special call meeting minutes. And approve of July the tenth, twenty twenty-three, special call meeting minutes. To get approved.
So move.
Second.
It's been moving seven all in favor. All right, pass is five. Okay, consent hour. Anything in consent hour that need to be moved to act nine, if it's ten, not to be approved.
Seven point three. Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Would you explain what kind of dual enrollment or whatever you're trying to get going with Allpoint?
To Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald-Green. We actually are trying to reinstate a program that was in place a few years ago. Dual enrollment is being offered currently with co-lean on the junior college level. We were trying to extend that opportunity so more students can benefit and focus on like robotics, foundation to education, STEM programs to kind of broaden the opportunities that those students will have. So, that was the reason we were trying to air another agreement with Allpoint for the senior college level and just have a bigger platform for our students.
But you haven't. Now, you haven't completed.
Well, we do have a specific, and we have the agreement, and we're asking that the board grant, Ms. McDonald-Green, the opportunity to sign the agreement so we can enter into the contract with them. They are agreeing to offer a hundred dollars of credit for each course, the maximum probably three hour courses.
Okay, what I would like to do is to table this because of a situation that happened with me and the parents, and I would like to table it, and maybe we can discuss it because it dealt with personnel in executive session.
So, move it to executive session?
Yeah, I would like to table it.
Okay.
Okay.
Our offer motion, we approve all of the consent items with exception of seven point three.
Second.
They're moving seven all in favor. All right. Eight point two.
Good morning, Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald-Green, all in a present. And within your binder, you have the required documents, our financial statements that we are required to submit to our board each month. Are there any concerns?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the claims document acceptance of the financial documents as presented.
Seven all in favor. It passes five.
Thank you.
Eight point five.
Good morning, Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald-Green. Before you is a document, approval of contract for family engagement consultant. We're asking, it's the recommendation of the interim superintendent that the board trustees grant approval of the contract between National School District and the aforementioned consultant who will continue to, we're asking for you to approve the continued support of that consultant for family engagement. And we all know how important it is for our parents to be a part of our children's, oh, sorry, of our children's education from pre-K through twelfth grade. It just shows that we are aware of the importance of parents and how they support our school district. This particular consultant has broadened our parent, our P T, S A P T O organizations, and that's critical to what we do with children every day from the academic perspective. And now, we're ensuring an extension or an expansion or a real collaboration with our parents. So, we're asking for the continued support of the board for this consultant.
I just want to say that I believe this past year, Ms. Morrison's got a phenomenal job. So, on that note, I move that we approve the contract for family engagement consultant. Second.
They're moving seven all in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald-Green. Agenda item eight point six is a request for the approval of exceptional ed and curriculum consulting services for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. If you look at your attachment, you requested at the last meeting a list of those consultants that we had in the district last year. If you look at your attachment, on one side for exceptional services, you will see a list of those consultants. And you'll see that we're requesting those same consultants for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, and also have listed what their services were. Also, for curriculum, you'll see the list of consultants that we had and who were requested for this year. I would like to add that principals had a say in this matter. This is not, this is not coming just from curriculum. Principals were getting the list, they were asking to look at their data from last year to see if we saw progress. We saw the progress, and they wanted to continue with the same consultants. The next attachment after the vendor list is a list of the vendors that submitted RFPs, and they are priced per day. So, as you can see, we basically went with the, even though we selected, made the selections, they were the lesser amount of all. Some of them had like thirty-seven hundred dollars a day, so. Are there any questions?
Ms. Morrison, do you, and I can add this to McDonald-Green too. I mean, our consultants are responsible, let's just say, for the improvements in test scores. Can we say that?
Yes. They have great support.
They have, they have been, especially with new teachers coming in. Great support, because you know, we have academic coaches, but I can use elementary for examples. We have three elementary schools. We have one ELA coach, we have one math coach, but we have multiple teachers across the district. So, by the consultants coming in, that's a big help to us to try to make sure, and even though we're building capacity, sometime we build that capacity, and we may lose a teacher, and so we have to hire another teacher, so we have to start on.
So, that helps the consistency between those test scores where they need to be.
And what we're doing, we started this previous year that they, they just be finalized once state accountability scores are finalized. But what we're doing is we're working with the company that is allowing us to look at our return on investment. So, what we want to be able to bring to the board is a document that says this consultant touched this area, and these are the results they'll be receiving.
Yes, I'd like to see that, yeah. Well, we're in the process of being able to take care of. So.
Now, I just want to ask a question, because I'm not looking at the contract, but I think it's in there. Something, if it's identified that a consultant is not doing their job during the course of this contract, is there something in the contract that would allow us to just continue paying that?
Yes, sir. It's in our policy as well as in the contract. And we get reports every time they come, they have to give us reports. They have to meet with principals, they have to give us reports. And if we see that anytime there's an issue on their end or our end, it can be the contract can be dissolved.
Okay. With that in mind, I will move that we approve to accept the different contractual services as presented.
They're moving seven all in favor. All right, pass. Eight point nine.
Again, Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald-Green. I am here to, for eight point nine and eight point ten. To, the first one is the engagement of Chambers and Gale, a law firm. And the second one is for the issuance of a twenty twenty-three tax anticipation note. It is the same amount that it has been in previous in the prior year. And of course, it is because of the cash flow issues, and you should have those in your binder.
So, you're making a request for two of that items on here?
Two, I.
Right, the change.
Eight point nine.
Choice certificate, who's that being changed to, Ms. McDonald? Is that, is that incorrect?
Yes.
Yes.
And the other is for the tax anticipation note that.
And.
You want to proceed with Mr. Gale that's doing that?
That's included in eight point nine, the engagement of the Chambers and Gale.
Okay, do, but I wonder whether we need to authorize this separately or together?
Separate service.
Okay. Well, I'll offer motion that we approve item number eight point nine, the resolution to engage professional and authorizing award and sale of board, the trustees of the National School District Tax and Revenue Anticipation.
Second.
They're moving seven all in favor. All right, it passes five.
I move that eight point ten, the approval of the trust certificate.
They're moving seven all in favor. All right, pass is five. Okay.
There will be documents.
Okay, this is eight point eleven.
Eight point eleven, Mr. James, members of the board, is a request to authorize us to proceed with work on the sign for the new high school. As you all are aware, the sign specifications came in, but we're confident that we're able to produce that sign at a much cheaper cost to the district. And so, we want your authorization to proceed to gathering the supply list, gather the specifications for the completion of that sign, and to proceed with the creation of that sign for the high school.
Is this the sign that Coca-Cola was really due?
Yes, but if you, as you're aware, I think that estimate came in at approximately a hundred and twenty.
Oh, it did?
Yes.
Because I thought they were going to pick around fifty thousand.
It wasn't trivial, but it's still, that's an absorbent amount, that's quite a large amount. But we believe that even with their support, we can do it at a more cost-effective amount.
With some local contacts?
Yes, and some district personnel.
Okay, so you want authorization to proceed with that process?
Yes.
And bring back to the final.
Yes.
We will be able to see some pictures of it as.
Oh, yes.
Well, I'll offer motion that we grant you with that, approve that authorization.
Second.
You and Mr. Feer.
Yes.
They're moving seven all in favor. Out of now and administer your reports, the program money update.
Good morning, again, Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald-Green. What you have in your board binder for your monthly review is the federal programs, ESER monthly report, June twenty twenty-three, and it encompasses ESER two and ESER three. And if you look at the top, you'll see that the ESER two grant ends September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and ESER, I'm sorry, ESER two ends September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and ESER three ends September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Any questions about your federal programs, ESER two and three overview allocations? Thank you very much.
Turn around a bit.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, nine point two.
Quarter to safety report, our officer days is out of the district. If you will look at your report between the months of April and June, the district had three incidents, two of which resulted in a lost time. We are continuing to put in proactive measures to decrease our incidents that are occurring on the campus. Questions?
Okay, for calendar, for the board, anything you would be adding to it? Give up his days. Do that. Nine point four.
Nine point four, you all did receive the board FYI on last week. For this week, we're continuing to prepare all of our campuses for school opening. New teacher, new teachers will arrive at the district on Monday. There will be a new teacher orientation Monday and Tuesday under the direction of Dr. Morrison and her staff. We want to make certain that we are pairing those new teachers with mentor teachers earlier in the year, at the start of the year, as a part of our human capital plan, to make certain that we are retaining those new employees. As you know, you have some angst when you're first a retired employee, so we want to make sure that they're paired with veteran employees, to ease them into this process, into the orientation process. Student orientations are already scheduled, and they will start next week at all of our campuses. National School actually started their orientation process yesterday for the sixth grade students, because you know, the transition years are difficult transition, they're a difficult period. So, she brought in students, ambassadors, to actually speak to their peers to help them understand, you know, what to expect as new students on their campuses. You have, before you, convocation, district convocation, will be held next Friday. Started at eight-thirty, we will be at the National School gym. So, we invite all of board members to come and celebrate the opening of school with all of the employees. In our personnel department, we are still making certain, working to make certain that all of our classrooms are fully staffed, that all positions are filled. Ms. Tennessee and her staff have been working overtime in order to make certain that all of our processes and all of our new employees have completed the process, the hiring paperwork and so forth. So, if you'll look, West, National Early College, National High School, and Fallon are fully staffed. At National School, we started working on one certified math teacher, one inclusion teacher. At Morgantown, there was an MTSS and a support staff opening, but there are two recommendations have been made, so we will work to make certain we finalize that process. And at McLaurin, I believe we're down to one teacher?
One teacher.
One teacher and one T A teammate. And so, we're still working on that process. We may have to be creative in how we service those students. Again, HR has been inundated with paperwork, as you're aware, with some retirements this year, that staff is now down to two people, and I applaud Ms. Tennessee and Ms. Anderson for the hard work that they put in. I've come here on Saturdays, and they've been here on Saturdays to make certain that everything is taken care of. We also appreciate Ms. McMorris, who has been assisting Ms. Tennessee, Mrs. Tennessee with that process. As you all are aware, as we've had employees to retire, we've worked really hard to shift responsibilities. We believe that because of the enrollment and because of the services that we provided, we believe that we can be more efficient, providing additional responsibilities to other people. So, so far it has been working out. Ms. Tennessee and I may have to have a conversation going forward about her office, because I've just seen how much paperwork really flows through that office. For operations, all schools are complete except for McLaurin, and as you are aware, McLaurin had summer programs in that building which kind of delayed their completion. We've had to authorize overtime for that staff to make certain that we're ready to receive everybody on next week. New building updates, we are still pressing forward. It has been a labor of love. Continue to work with our project manager, Marco and M three A, as well as Don Barron, to make certain that we are able to get into those buildings. We've notified them, we have to be in that building. They've made great progress, and there's yet quite a few things that have to be done. We're working with M three A to have a certificate of substantial completion, but that certificate will outline specific tasks that must be completed before that our job is deemed complete. And that's all the updates that I have. Any questions from the board?
Well, I just want to congratulate you all for staffing, because we've been to a regional meeting, and the talk is among all school boards, Arkansas, Louisiana, and Mississippi, that staffing has been difficult. Math teachers.
Extremely.
Extreme difficulties in all of our states with retirement. So, I'm proud of us for doing that, because I think we're, that puts us ahead of the game for lots of districts throughout the region. So, congratulations for the staff.
The recent Mississippi Association of School Superintendents Conference, they opened the conference with that very exciting discussion about how districts are having to be creative and ensure that they are able to fill those classrooms with highly qualified teachers.
That is the crisis looming.
Yes.
That we all face.
And as far as the new school is concerned, it's coming along. It's a beautiful property, and I just can't wait for everybody to come in and enjoy it, as well as our students. State of the art, no excuses.
Was happy to see workers out there today starting to prepare for the line in the front. So, they've started moving things that are out there. The entire area has to be leveled, graded down, and it will be in pristine condition for our open.
And it's amazing how gray it's been growing one day. Yesterday it was dust, today it was gray.
And I just want to applaud all of the staff members here at Brayden and at our schools for their attention to details. Our principals have been working overtime, our administrative teams have been working overtime to ensure that they interview, approves, submit recommendations, get those buildings ready, reach out to their existing staff. The Brayden staff has been extremely responsive. As I said before, they're a very efficient group. I told them they're efficient, they're very professional. So, I applaud them for what they've done to continue to make certain that the district runs smoothly. Thanks to Ms. Davis to make certain that as I move transitioning to that office, she's kept me afloat. And so, I appreciate all, everyone who's just stepped in and has taken on additional responsibilities to make certain that there is no lapse in services whatsoever.
All right. School board comments.
The only thing I want to say is, I hope each and every one of you have a very successful year.
Yes, I have, first of all, let me thank Ms. Ware and I who are representing the board, trying to organize the legal and cutting ceremony. We were so thrilled and pleased with some of the other members from the administration, particularly our superintendent, interim superintendent, and the other persons, they've done such a tremendous job. I think I'm going to have to compensate them by making sure that I get them another biscuit and sauce or something. And Tony always gets two or three. But I really appreciate having that opportunity. Of course, we share some more. Of course, we'll share some more information with the board regarding where we are at the appropriate time. The other thing I want to do is offer this, offer a motion that any nominal expense, uh, that we have and that we are incurred, uh, in organizing this particular effort be authorized by the board. Uh, and that this McDonald and in our business office would, would collaborate on where those funds should be shifted, how they should be shifted. They're not major expenses, but there are some things that we have to get done that, that do cost a few dollars. So I want to offer that as a motion to make sure it's part of the record, uh, that, that, uh, the board has authorized these expenditures for this particular event.
Second.
Moving seven dollars in favor.
Ms. James, if I may, let me do, I'd probably say thank you to the board of trustees for entrusting me with this honor, uh, to serve as the interim superintendent of this district. Uh, as you all are aware, I've devoted twenty seven years here. It has always been my pride to be an employee of the district where I graduated from. And so it's even a greater honor to, uh, sit in this seat and I assure you that I will continue to serve the students of this district, the citizens of this district with the excellence that I expect of myself and that I know that they deserve. So again, thank you all for this opportunity.
And, and, and with that, I, I think we're looking forward to a wonderful school year with a new school, a new superintendent. And just a renewed vision for our community. So thank you all and all your hard work, it's much appreciated.
Um, I just want to say that it's a great day to be in the cheese. I've seen great things just this past year happening, uh, with our schools here in Natchez. And I too am a graduate of this illustrious district. And as of yesterday, I was named Assistant Vice Pr, Vice President of Student Affairs, seeing the students that are all going to stay. To represent Natchez and, and, and all the board, which is at our back door. A lot of our students, students attend off of State University. So hey, y'all need some kids to come to Alcorn?
Okay, like even when I said, we are hoping for a great year. Now, also in that, I ask that everybody just be patient, we, we, we know everything that you need. It's just that, if you get them about five hundred, six hundred people, it's gonna take us some time. I mean, to get to you, you might be first, you might be seventh, but we're gonna work on, we ain't forgot about you. Just be patient. You don't want us to rush on you, you might miss some. So just be patient, we got lists of things we have to do. We prioritize, but, uh, we haven't got about nobody. And then there's nothing, nothing wrong with keep asking either, keep calling. Now, if you forgot about me, you know, we ain't forgot about you, but you're number one hundred and seventy two on the list. And we on number three right now. We working on you, we'll get you back sometime, you're two or three years old. But, uh, and also I know that new principals, they, they like to board members to get out. I tell you that you give it to Ms. Davis, all the invitations and things that you got to give them in, you know, early. We don't come in like once or twice, but she give it to us pretty good. I actually got out there today, we was invited to lunch with the McElroy group. And it was July twenty seven, twenty twenty two, and we, we got it today. I didn't get a chance to eat, you know. It, it, but Tony might have made you make it. So I'm saying that if you want us to come to your curriculum program, you probably give us the invitation now for next year, not this curriculum program.
And, and you all have our email addresses, uh.
Right.
Email. Some of y'all got our email, I'm gonna put it there.
Okay, but with all that being said.
Our law promotion, we would have a close determination?
Second.
Is it moving seven dollars in favor? Okay, pass it five, you're close determination. Alright.